Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. The meeting tonight is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the Town of Penfield's website, penfield.org, also on the Town of Penfield's Government Access Channel 1303, and on streaming media devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search "Penfield TV" in your device's app store, and it is free. If you would like to address the board on any matter tonight, there will be specific public participation opportunities for each application after the board responds to the presentation with its own questions and concerns. Anyone that is viewing the public hearing remotely and wishes to address the board can do so by calling 340-8771 or by submitting electronically at the website, penfield.org. Tonight's meeting will first start with our work session, which will be pretty brief, I assume, and then we'll go right into the public hearings. I don't think we're going to need to take a break in between. At the public hearing, we'll ask the applicant and any witnesses to come up at that table, right?
Yeah.
You guys kind of switch me up every once in a while, but that's okay. And then give us name and address, and then the board member will most likely walk the applicant through the presentation just to make it flow more smoothly. Certainly, the applicant can say anything he or she likes in support of the application, and really, the same goes for anyone that comes and speaks on an application or submits through the website or on the phone. We'd like to -- and then, by the way, when the applications are done, we'll deliberate and vote on each. We'd like to point out every month that we think the town does a very good job of notifying its citizens of the agenda in each particular application. I think you've all probably seen the signs that you have posted and that -- on the property so that people driving by can see the properties are subject of an application and make a phone call if they like. The town also mails postcards to people that live within a certain area of the property, the subject property, posts the agenda on the website, and here at Town, we think it's a process that works well. So, having said that, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
Great. Okay, so let's go to the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we've all had the minutes put together well again, as always. Any further discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have two tabled applications listed on the agenda. The second one has been withdrawn. That's 3825 Atlantic Avenue. The first one, 2200 Penfield Road. Anybody here on that application, 2200 Penfield? Genesee Valley Therapy, is that right?
Genesee Valley Physical Therapy.
I stand corrected. Anybody here on that application? Okay, this has been pending on the tabled agenda for probably three or four months, and I think we decided last time -- and we're waiting, by the way, for further material and information from the applicant. I believe we said last time that what we would do is make a motion to deny this without prejudice so that if the person comes back within --
Under a year.
-- under a year, that they're able to do that without our specific permission. I'll leave it up to you, Andy, whether to waive the $75 fee, okay? All right. So, given that we've heard nothing from the applicant since it was tabled, I'd make a motion to deny with those conditions.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we'll run through tonight's applications briefly just to see if anybody has any questions on them or anything needs to be clarified. So, the first one, 1601 Penfield Road. That's the temporary flower sales. Anybody have any questions on that one for clarification? Two, I think we're going to put on next month, which is fine, at the request of the applicant and Laura. That goes on next month. Okay.
It was prepared.
Number three, 260 Embry. Any questions for clarification on that?
No.
And then the car wash, any questions on that?
No.
Okay, fantastic. Well, then...
Actually, with the car wash, what was the result of the planning board?
They tabled it.
They tabled it.
I think they had some questions relating to site, some site modifications.
There were some questions, I think, about also the drive flow regarding how the traffic was going to flow on the site because of the way that they're set up.
Oh, you know what? Let me go back to the first tabled application. Did we ever do -- did we do seeker on that? I have the form here.
You must have because you approved...
The one part of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think we did.
I don't think we did either.
Genesee Valley? I don't think we did.
That's right. But wasn't there a part of it that got approved?
No, they were just looking for a second sign that was...
Oh, the second sign, okay. So, you didn't do it.
Do we need to do it if we deny without prejudice?
So, I'm going to make a motion. I think this is a type two.
This will be unlisted.
All right, I'll make a motion. Oh, actually, Matt, it's yours. Do you care?
I don't care. No, no, I was going to let you...
All right, I'll make a motion under seeker to declare it an unlisted action and to issue a negative declaration.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll just renew my prior motion to deny based upon the items that we put on the record, and the person's welcome to come back within the next year, perhaps free of charge when ready. So, I, again, make the motion to deny.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think we're ready now for number one.
Actually, I do have a question.
Sure.
On the letter that Andy provided on a previously approved application. I'm not sure, is there any action on that?
You're talking about the anonymous letter?
Yes.
Right. I -- no, it's an anonymous letter that we've all seen and voicing some concerns about the use of that property. When the application was heard, we did have people either submit something electronically or I think we even had people come in that weren't anonymous and voice their concerns. So, if I recall correctly, those concerns weren't germane to the application. They were more concerned about loud parties, et cetera, that sort of thing. And I think we did have a little bit of a conversation with the applicant about being a good neighbor, et cetera. So, not much we can do with an anonymous letter, other than read it, talk about it a little bit.
And the hearing's closed.
And the hearing is closed, right. So, obviously, people have a right to call the appropriate authorities if there's a perceived violation of the noise ordinance or any other violation of law. So, unless anyone else has any suggestions, I think that's about all we can do now.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, thanks, George, for bringing that up, though. All right. Number one, please.
Kimberly Kreischer, Abundant Flowers Incorporated, 295 Lake Road, Ontario, New York, 14519. Request a recommendation of approval for the issuance of an itinerant vendor license under Section 162-6-E1B and Section 162-6-E2 of the code to allow the sales of potted flowers, vegetables, and herbs at 1601 Penfield Road. The properties currently are formally owned by Penfield TK Owner LLC and its own general business, SBL number 138.08-1-2/PLZA. This is application number 22Z-0013.
Hi, if you could just give us your name and address, and then the board member will help you through.
Sure, my name's Kimberly Kreischer. I live at 295 Lake Road in Ontario.
Okay.
So, can I go ahead then, Dan?
Absolutely.
So, first off, Kimberly, thanks for coming in. So, just so we're kind of clear, we are looking for approval to install a 30-foot-by-60-foot tent in the parking lot of the Panorama Plaza. The -- will be used as a temporary retail outlet for selling potted flowers and herbs. And you want this through April 1st through June 30th?
Correct.
Okay. Now, you did request this last year, and it was approved at that time?
I did, I did, and unfortunately, I got caught by not being able to find labor and operators to run the location, so I ran into other locations last year and unfortunately was not able to run in this location.
Gotcha. So, a couple of questions around that. Obviously, I did take a look out there. I'm pretty familiar with the plaza. There's certainly plenty of parking.
Sure.
For all intents and purposes, it is an unused portion of the parking lot, so this is actually a good draw, I think, for the other retailers in that area. What will be the hours of operation?
Typically, we're open from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Gotcha. And will there be any other activities that would be occurring besides the selling of the potted plants and the vegetables?
No, no, that is all we do.
Yeah, and just for verification, this is a temporary in nature, so you've got contingency plans for removal of refuse and whatnot to make sure that there's a buildup?
Correct. Correct, yes, we do.
All right. I don't have any additional questions, Dan, if other members do.
Is there any difference between these plans and this application this year and what we approved last year? Is there any change?
None at all, no changes. Just the dates are a little bit different. I was not open last year for Easter, was not planning to be open for Easter last year, and this year I am, so it's just the dates.
Later this year, right?
Pardon?
Because it's later this year?
Correct, correct. Hopefully, no snow.
Outdoor lighting, music, anything like that?
No, in fact, we are nonpowered, so we do not have any lighting, which is part of the reason for the hours of operation. There may be, like, one of the tent operators, we allow them, if they want, to run through their cellphone on a small Bluetooth speaker, some background music, but it certainly is...
No rock, no live rock concerts?
No, no concerts, no big speakers, no fireworks until after my season is done, then the fireworks folks can do their thing.
Have you guys -- so, I saw that this was approved last year. Have you ever been at this site before? Was last year going to be the first year?
No, last year was going to be the first year.
With that, is the parking -- I know that there's ample parking, but is it clear where people go? I'm just -- it is a big tent, and would people very clearly know where to go in the flow of traffic?
Yes, what we typically do is we set up so that we're in a bank of what is marked as designated parking, and we take about 20 of those parking spaces, and we try to stay out of the main flow of where traffic would be coming in. But we also, obviously, the tent is quite large, it's pretty visible. We do put, you know, obviously, the stake covers are orange, and if we feel that traffic appears to be closer to the tent than we like, we have in the past put some yellow caution tape around and things of that nature to try to, A, protect our people that are working there, plus the customers, plus our equipment.
I know that Planet Fitness is right there, kind of looking at what's on the screen. Have they mentioned anything or have they submitted any kind of concerns? Have you talked to them about doing this pop-up?
I have not. I work right through the landlord, through LLD Enterprise, and they do, I imagine, check with their tenants and make sure that there aren't any issues. You know, again, we plan to be -- I know you've got the flag up front there. Where we plan to be is...
On the other side of the access road?
Yes, on the other side of the access road, right there, right where Andy's pointing or whoever is pointing, off to the left, my left a little bit more. We'll be planning to be right in that...
So, it's really out of...
We try to stay away as best we can.
From the gym? Me, too.
I should go to the gym.
I'm curious, what other towns were you -- did you do the pop-ups in?
We ran in Canadaigua and Webster.
Okay.
So, we're up in Parkway Plaza in Canadaigua, if you're familiar with that. And that, actually, that plaza is quite busy and quite a bit more compact than this. So, with the city there, they did ask that, you know, that we stay within the boundaries of -- and stay out of the aisleways, if you will, that people tend to drive in. And then in Webster, we're in Webster Square, down by the Ollies, in the BJ's Plaza.
Yeah, that's actually in the parking lot, the same place that the temporary fireworks was. I want to say last year or the year before last, same place. That's -- it's pretty tucked away.
All right. And this year, just so you know, I'm sure the fireworks folks will be in here probably next month, but I do plan to lease my tent to them for their season, so we're trying to align together so that the tent's not up and down, I'm not in their way, and, you know, we're trying to work together a little bit to have a single location.
All right, any other questions from the board? I don't see anybody on the phone in or electronically, anybody in the audience care to speak about this application? Okay, then let's proceed with the seeker.
Well, in regards to the seeker, I would move to make this a type-two action requiring no further review.
All right, I'll second that. Any further discussion on the environmental? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And now the merits.
So, this is a repeat of the exception request that was done last year and approved. As indicated, there's no changes to this. The parking lot in the Panorama Plaza is certainly large enough to accommodate this without any impact to any of the other vendors, and it's well-planned out. It's, quite honestly, based on the documentation. I can't wait to see her set it up, so I believe on the merits of that that it should be approved.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
When you come back next year, one of the first questions will be, how did it go? Did you have any problems?
Very good. Right now, one of my biggest problems is making sure I have supply.
Oh, boy. All right.
Take care.
Okay, next, Harold.
Harold.
Harold, that's a blast.
Should we call him? Let's call him, that's a lot.
Man, oh, man. Listen, that was a compliment to Harold, okay? Andy, wow. I wish I had gone out this afternoon, but I haven't, I promise.
Arnold Smink, Smink Family Foundation Incorporated, 3 Nightingale Woods, Fairport, New York, 14450. On behalf of the Rochester Christian School, request approval for the modification of a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.1-E1K of the code to allow the construction of a replacement classroom addition at 260 Embry Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Rochester Christian School Incorporated and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 108.11-1-1.1, application number 22Z-0015.
Okay, if you could give us your names and address, please.
Arnold Smink, 3 Nightingale Woods, Fairport, New York.
Michelle Salvaggio, 4 Grass Point, Webster, 14580.
Thank you.
Okay, we reviewed your application pretty thorough, so it's got a lot of information in there, so this shouldn't be too difficult for questions. So, what I see right now is you have a 20-by-40 temporary permit was issued for a structure put there for a classroom, and now you want to, in a sense, remove that and then put a, I think it was 25-by-35, you know, basically, it's almost the same size footprint in almost the same size location, but in addition now, it's attached to the building and not separate from the building.
Correct.
Sound correct?
It will share the wall with the gymnasium.
Okay. So, it'll pretty much, the gap between where it is now, it'll almost have the same footprint if you look at it from the sky then, I would think.
It will be a little bit in towards the main building. Right now, there's a, maybe a 20-foot gap between the main building and the existing structure, and that will be reduced to eight foot.
Okay.
So, it'll be, the back end of it will be about 12 feet closer to the rear of the gym.
In terms of the building addition, is it going to look the same? The outside of the building is going to match what's currently for the primary structure?
Yes, to the extent that we can get the same block. It will either be the same or as close as we can come to it.
Okay. Any changes for lighting, means of egress-ingress for the property?
We will be improving the rear exit of the school there. Right now, there's an exit that breaks out into the opening, that 20-foot opening that I discussed. There's a covered walkway that walks towards the old temporary shed. That will be updated, improved, and the new doors will face out towards the playground, so it'll be a more convenient exit. Also, we're putting in a electric ramp stairs for handicap accessibility to this classroom and to the gymnasium.
Okay, perfect. Will the hours of operation change because of this addition?
No.
No? Any changes around the property in terms of buffering or sites or things like that? You know, it'll look, in a sense, the same from the neighbors?
It'll look much better to the neighbors because the old building is quite an eyesore today, and this will be a market improvement.
Okay. And there won't be any changes for parking, from what I see, and I don't think there'll be any other issues. There'll be a detriment to the neighboring properties as well, correct?
Correct.
I don't have any other further questions. It's a very similar use, so it's, in a sense, the same building, but permanent.
Right, before I ask other board members, I just, anyone at home that wants to phone in with a comment, 340-8771 or electronically at penfield.org. Any other questions from the board?
I don't have any.
No? No? Okay, anybody in the audience care to speak about this? Were either of you involved, oh, I'm dating myself, when your neighbors came in for an application, the vets, I forget the, what was the organization, CDS Monarch, maybe? I mean, that was a long time ago.
I was at the school.
Yeah.
But I wasn't involved. I was a teacher.
That was something that was a little difficult at first, but it worked out very well, and in large part because of the cooperation from folks at the school. So, it was, I remember that. That was, we had a full room for two meetings because it got tabled once.
Well...
Yeah, okay. Well, I think we can move with consideration, then let's start with the environmental.
Okay, for seeker, this is a type-two action requiring no further review.
I'll second.
All right, we have a seeker motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And then I will move to approve the conditional use. Everything's going to stay, in a sense, from the outside, nothing's really going to change from, except for now having a permanent structure attached to the building where it was a temporary building before. Everything, you know, the building's going to match. This is the best they can. There's no real changes or impacts from the outside looking in, so you won't see any differences for the property, and it sounds like there's going to be more improvements, in a sense, from the new structure, being, you know, affixed to the building as opposed to separate.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Did we get a second?
Second.
Now, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
1975 was a long time ago for a temporary structure.
I was going to say that, too. I don't know who that is. Does that fall into Town or does that fall on them? You should ask the students to define that word.
You know, Harold might know. Harold might know.
I don't think Harold was even here in 1975. He's come and gone, though. I hope he's watching at home.
I'm sure he is.
Sure. All right. Next application, please, Andy. You're waiting for me to say Andy, I know. I know who you are.
Appreciate it.
Jeff Arnold, Splash Car Wash, Fairport LLC, 472 Wheeler's Farm Road, Milford, Connecticut, 06461. Request approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a building addition with less front setback than required under Section 250-5.7-D3 of the code, and approval for a special use permit for signage under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow signage with greater graphics, trademarks, and logos than allowed under Section 250-10.11-E of the code, more building signage than allowed under Section 250-10.13-C of the code with greater total sign area than allowed under Section 250-10.13-B of the code, and a larger freestanding sign than allowed under Section 250-10.12-B of the code, and larger traffic control signs than allowed under Section 250-10.17 of the code at 2140 Fairport, Nine Mile Point Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Splash Holdings CC LLC and its own general business, SBL number 140.01-2-5.1. This is application number 22Z-0016.
There's a, I just want to, of course, sir, I want to pass out just a little bit of some photos, some renderings of some renovations that we've done to several car washes in the past probably three or four years.
Thank you.
Now, to give you an idea of weekend here...
Yeah, you're stepping away from the mic, so that's okay. Just, you can repeat what you said right when you sit down.
The first pack that I hand you there is, let me start over again. My name's Jeff Arnold with Class Chassis Car Wash, Splash Car Wash. We've joined with Splash Car Wash. That's why I still use the name both. You'll see the signage now says Classy Chassis Car Wash.
Right.
My business partner, Dave Clements, myself, who started Class Chassis Car Wash 20 years ago, the renovations you'll see will often have Classy Chassis signage on them, but we've combined with Splash Car Wash, based out of Connecticut. Owning these properties is a joint venture, joint group, but this site and the Buckman sites, which are all, were proposed to renovation, substantial renovations, all of them. The packet that I gave you there is simply the question of our skills and what we've done in the past of renovations, and I think it's important because we're, what our, the concept of our business model is, is much about restoring and rehabilitating older car washes every bit as much as doing a ground-up, new build, which obviously is more difficult for approvals, more expensive, and it's kind of, we're not a believer in cutting the pie, just continue to build more and more. It seems better for us to take older ones, they're getting run down, and refurbish some. And when we refurbish them, we try our best to refurbish every bit of it, from landscaping to the proper lighting, to drainage, A to Z, all new equipment. The first one you'll see, the first one you see is the new Geneva Car Wash, and this was not open yet in the pictures, but that opened a week and a half ago. That's at the intersection of 5 and 20 and County Road 10 in Geneva. It's where the old Ponderosa used to be. The second photograph is the one, you'll see, it's a yellow building. That was Watertown. That renovation was completed this past year, and it was kind of an old unsaled car wash that we purchased. It was the two-tone yellows, and you can see the aftermath of when we rehabbed it with the look of our silver halo and kind of a glass feature to the front, the vacuum centers in our art color schemes, which are the two grays and the blue. The third one was a, the renovation was completed less than a year ago. It was in Newark on Route 31, directly across from Wegmans, entrance to Wegmans. That, again, was a yellow brick building that you can see the kind of the before and afters of that conversion. The one after that is Seneca Falls, Route 5 and 20. That was completed probably a year and a half ago now. That was completed probably a year and a half ago now, and that was, the front was just an old rundown block building, white and red block building that we converted over with the town's approval on, again, similar what we're looking for here. The next one was Vessel Parkway, right next to the school, right next to the high school. Again, an old kind of rundown block building that was completely rehabilitated. Every aspect of the site, landscaping, fountain's put in, and that one was done, again, less than two years ago. And then the last one was, I'd say approximately two and a half years ago. You've seen that's the way we bought that Cortlandt site, right in front of, that's right in front of Lowe's, entrance to Lowe's. The before and after pictures kind of, I think, speak for themselves.
Okay, so what, can you tell us briefly what happened at planning board? We've heard it's been tabled, but just give us a brief description of the conversation there.
The, there's a couple of things that obviously we all agree need, we need to do some improvements on. One is, as you come into the entrance drive, the, create a little bit swinger, although it flows very nice, maybe in the photo it doesn't flow so well, but no matter if you're coming from the north or south, I've been through it many times, the entering that drive lane is so wide, it's fairly easy, but the goal would be taking the north side of it and making the swing radius a little bit more, so we get a little bit better flow of traffic that has headed northbound, turning into the site.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else with?
Yeah, Garrett Steiner, project engineer with DDS Companies. So they wanted to see that entrance more perpendicular, again, to make it easier for people coming in from the southbound direction. We think we have room to square that up.
Okay.
Change it how they wanted to see it. We've tested it right now with turning analysis, and it does seem feasible, seems like it will work, but we think we have the room to square it up, make it more perpendicular. That was one comment from the planning board. We're, right now, we're addressing comments from the planning board. We'll be submitting tomorrow for the work session on the 24th.
Okay.
The other item that I think is important to note is the, as they enter here, exit the car wash, the flow of car, the traffic is staying similar to what it is that you see nowadays, if anybody's ever visited the site. As you come out now, they have, the engineers have the design of the way the customers enter and exit the vacuum center backwards from what normal flow would be. Our goal would be to reverse that back to the proper way, as they would come out of the wash, they would stay to the right, not the outside lane, not the inside lane, flowing out of the traffic, flowing out of the wash. So our plan is to switch that back to the proper flow and push.
Yeah, we'll add a stop bar when they exit the tunnel and convert it back to, when you're driving, you're always on the right. And then they will cross, when they exit the tunnel versus the exiting lane.
The, I think the other point that was brought up by the chairman was the concern about customers entering into the lane not having the ability to just, to drive out of the lane. Once they enter, they're forced to kind of go through the flow to the pay stations and through our system, which is a valid point. It's not, no, we don't have that perfect answer in how to get, typically in a situation like this, like our Geneva wash, if a customer was to pull in, this is a man's site, it's not open if it's not man, and probably you could visit the Geneva site, I would bet you 99% of the time, somebody's out at that pay station, simply because customers still, I think we all, and especially at different age levels, we struggle with pay stations, so we try to keep an attendant out at the pay station. So there's a little manual bond override underneath all the gates. They would simply open the gate and allow the customer exit out that backside. We're trying to explore some other ideas to help, say, maybe we could combine with Burger King, maybe we could try to find another way where they could escape to the vacuum area. And it's, it sounds cheap to say this, but the goal of it is to have customers come into the wash, exit the wash, and have the opportunity to go use the free vacuum system. It's a fairly elaborate, probably about $300,000 vacuum system being put in. It's state-of-the-art as anything anybody's ever seen. It's their, what we call silent vacuums because they use a single motor turbine vac with a massive silencer on it opposed, it allowed vacuums that you used to have. And everything's free there, the vacuums are free. So we like to have customers that use it, that are wash customers. In Seneca Falls, we didn't have the luxury of gating it like we do our new sites, and I would say we probably get 70% of the customers using the vacuums aren't, never spend a nickel with us. And we take on a lot of garbage, we take on a lot of burden, it wears out the machines, and it's not to sound cheap, it's just that it, when we open it up to just everybody, the vacuums, and they fill up, then the paying customers can't use the service that it's intended for.
Okay.
So I think those are the three points that I recall being the major ones.
All right. Would the variance request that you're making of us tonight have anything to do with, any proposed answers you're going to give the planning board? If that question makes sense.
Yeah, no, sir, I don't.
No. Okay. All right. Because I didn't, honestly, I didn't want to hamper you one way or another. If you come up with a different design to appease them, and we've already taken action.
Their concern was mostly ingress egress and traveling around the site, and the proposed addition and tunnel exit was not a concern to them.
All right. So, Andy, can you pull the Google back up again? I want to ask you some questions about that back road there, if you could call it a road.
It's much better now than it was, probably in the Google picture. They've really spent a lot, they've done a lot of advanced.
Who is "they," by the way? Is anybody?
Burger King.
Yeah, the proposed access drive, that's going to be Burger King.
No, on the backside. Is that Burger?
On the east side.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that runs pretty, it runs all the way from 441, I think all the way to Jeremiah's, does it? Pretty close, right?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah. But it's pretty bumpy, and do you intend for people to enter your site using that if they like?
No, sir, that's just, that's just simply an escape lane for every, when I say every once in a while, every, a few days, we'll have a customer come in with a vehicle, a big motor type truck, that's maybe just over the height limit, and we surely don't want to try to back anybody out in traffic, so we need a way to, if it gets to exit somebody that can't go through the wash, or a situation like the chairman of the planning board mentioned that if somebody was amiss to turn at Burger King, pull into our site.
Yeah.
And we need a way to get them out, so we, I think we have close in agreement with that neighboring property to you, to cross-access that roadway to the backside.
For the purposes that you've cited.
Just simply an escape emergency-type exit.
Okay. So tell me about the addition, why you need the variance, why you couldn't put it in any other location, part of your application, but just if you could run through it quickly as well.
Yeah, I think, first of all, again, it goes back to what I, what we talked about at the beginning, is that the concept of restoring this, restoring a building that's a great building. It's, it was a well-built building when it was built, it's not a piece of junk by any means, and it's worth, it's worthy of saving and just improving. I don't know how many businesses have done poorly there, but I think it's on its maybe fifth ownership or sixth ownership now. Nobody's ever really been able to make a go of it there. The wash bay is a little short in today's world to get a clean enough car to get it dry enough. We don't need that much more space with advancements equipment, but we need a little bit more space. It's a kind of a bland-looking building, it's got vinyl siding and some old brick at the bottom of it. Our goal is to make it so it looks attractive and draws customers in and want to give us a chance to see what we can do and see the changes. I think going through the same mundane that it's been for the last 25, 30 years is not proven well. And if, you know, we're really open-minded, we're not here ever trying to, we like working with the towns, we want to make it that everybody likes the way it comes out that it looks because we want everybody's our customers, right? We want to earn your, our customers, and creating the best that we can for our customers and the town is important for us.
All right, so the location that you are proposing the addition requires a variance, it's one of the reasons why you're here, but given its purpose, logically, it's not going to go anywhere else.
Yes, so I believe.
It can't go on the back, it can't go on the north.
If you tried to put the addition on the east side, there wouldn't be enough room to properly have cars make the turning radius into the tunnel. You're kind of restrained by the property limits on that side. Also, if you put it on the west side, the aesthetic that they're providing with the new building and the new tower is facing the road, and it's not facing that back access drive being built.
Okay, and do you see that the variance requested would have any adverse effect on traffic flow or site distance for cars going north and south on 250?
I think just the, yeah, I think the opposite, I think it wouldn't have any adverse effect on that, but is the former town supervisor in our informal meeting brought out that when you look at Mark's Pizza, when you look at Jeremiah's, we will, still won't even be in line with the front of their buildings, we'll still be behind that. And I think customers, instead of maybe going by us, hitting their brakes and trying to turn at the last minute, are going to get a better idea, okay, that's where I'm going on the car wash, they know where it's at. It kind of gets lost, it's, the design of it being set back so far, it's one of the buildings, it's probably farther back than any building.
Okay.
In that corridor there.
So let me just ask other board members, do you have any questions on that variance request before we start talking about signs?
I was going to ask, is that tall tower, SFT, you called it a tower, is there any purpose for it besides just decorative?
It has, it has, it'll run two basic glorified furnaces that'll feed heat down into the tunnel bay and create what's called, we call a hot room, so as it's coming through the dryer, it's a very warm room, it helps dry those little droplets of water. But no, it's kind of, if you see in most of, almost every one of our washes now, it's kind of a feature that, you know, everyone has their, kind of their look now, I guess, and the halo, the aluminum powder-coated halo at the top in the glass is just, it's a look that we've created with our architects, and just would like to continue that.
How much taller is it then? Like, because it looks really tall on here, but is it?
But it's funny, that version is.
Is it more like that?
Is it similar, like?
It's identical.
The drawings that you sent looks, I think it actually makes it look extremely tall.
Yeah, I think it's actually shorter than that, by a foot than that tower. It's more the rendering kind of goes at an upward angle, it makes it look huge. It's 32 to 33 feet.
So it's not a skyscraper?
No, not at all.
Well, for this area, maybe. Are you guys going to have people out drying, like hand-drying the cars?
No, sir, we, we hope, you know, we run pretty efficient dryers nowadays, and like I said, the hot room, we, it's about a, it's just as much about a drying agent, it's in the proper chemicals on a car, and the proper water that gets dried properly, but there will be no drying inside.
The reason I'm asking is, when the car comes out of the building that you're proposing, that's going to be the end of the business.
End of it.
It's not going to be more, there's not going to be more cars out front and more people drying and things like that.
Correct.
Just the circle of traffic, like, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the Royal Car Wash in...
Bites your tongue.
I'm sorry, that's what I'm thinking of, though. Is there going to be any kind of like, where you come out, will there, some cars be, is it going to create any kind of traffic issue with some cars passing to get back in line while other cars are coming out?
Not at all. So it actually, it actually, this whole goal when we started out here was saying, hey, how is it going to look to the town, right? We, we're spending, there's a sizable amount of money being spent, if you look where they're coming out and they make their right to leave. Right now, they literally can jog, they can hop right back, right back onto the road. They come to the intersection, if I can show you on here, I think.
Traffic.
What happens now, is customers come out of the wash, and they literally, they can shoot right over here for the exit. What we want to do is control this exit because it becomes confusing. And I guess if I was the town's position, the last thing I want to see is a bigger visitor.
Yeah, they're going, they're, they can't pick you up on the mic, I don't know. Bend the mic toward you, maybe?
So, so by here, we're going to build an entire new exit roadway to bring us all the way back here and have customers come all the way forward. It gets them in line, gets them in queue a whole lot better, a whole lot safer than what's going on there right now.
For getting out to 250.
So the only place that it would create potential is if, let's say, you go into the dry section, right? That's the dry area, those parking lot.
The vacuum area.
The vacuum, sorry, vacuum drives. When you're done there, that loops back around, so you would potentially have those people cross people coming out of the tunnel?
Yes, but we're going to switch that back over, and there's going to be a stop sign and stop bar there where you see the two arrows that are ones directing a customer in and out, those are going to actually switch back to the correct way. And there'll be a stop bar, and if needed, be a stop sign, whatever we need to do to control that traffic. And I think it's, it's pretty common sense. There's also, we have a two-foot-by-two-foot anti-collision sensor that's six, six feet at the exit of the wash, and that anti-collision sensor is pretty special. So if a car is coming out, and for some reason, the person doesn't stop at the stop bar, and they have to stop, it very quietly stops, shuts the entire wash down, and when that car moves, is able to move, the wash starts back up, ramps back up again. That anti-collision sensor, we use it all our sites, it's just, it's a miracle, it was something that was created probably 10 years ago, because before, if they stopped, obviously you could imagine what could happen in a tunnel-type wash, so.
So do you have a question on the size of the queue for the input?
Yep.
So do you know how many cars can actually be held in that queue?
I think we're estimating around 30 cars in a queue, 15 in each stretch of lane there.
Do you have an estimate of the volume during high times?
30, 30's far more than what's there now as far as the ability to queue right now. We have two lanes, shorter version, so this will allow us to have more queue in on site. And I think this, I think we'll probably actually, we'll be able to get more by the time you actually figure out what it is till the time they get to the wash. There's always those days, those two or three or four days, we all know that we see that the sun hasn't shined in three months, and a 40-degree day comes, the sun's out, the roads are dry, and everybody wants to wash a car. Those times that the line's ever going to back up to 25, 30 cars is slim to almost none. You know, it's not, we're not, we don't have the speed of, the speed or capacity of a delta sonic double tunnel to run the type of volume, so customers get to know that, hey, that line looks like, that line's a half-hour line, I'm going shopping, I'll come back tonight or come back another time. It's also going to be an attended site that, fully attended, when we're open, we're attended. When we shut down, we go dark. We're not looking to, we'll put on the staff needed to make sure that things run smoothly, because if not, our customers going to another wash. So, it's a, it's a very good stacking. What, again, when we looked at buying a site, we'd like to have the ability with some changes to improve stacking that's there now.
Any other questions about the variance? All right, let's then move to the, what I think is the more difficult from your perspective aspect of this application, and it's just, you guys are asking for a lot of signs. In fact, I looked through those photos you gave us today, I didn't see nearly the amount of signs on your other locations as this one. So let me just run through, I want to make sure I have, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong about my understanding of the sign issues that we have. And then this is no particular order, other than it's what I'm reading here. The circular signs, the two circular signs that are on the tower, let's call it, the issue with those is that the code requires that graphics, trademark, logos be no more than 50% of a sign area. And this looks, to me, I guess it looks like it's 100%, is that pretty darn close, right? It's great, greater than 50%. So I don't know if there's any way for you to bring that into compliance, just on that issue alone. I look at the sign, it's, you know, it's, I'm fine with the way the sign looks, but we do have this code that says a logo's only supposed to be 50% or less of a sign. So why do you need it to be greater than 50% or 100, almost 100%?
You're saying the logo, the word splash, the...
I think the whole thing, maybe not car wash, you know... Maybe not car wash, you know, express, I, I, it's hard to tell what, what else is on there. Is there a little car or something?
Yeah, I, I, I am totally open minded and we, we have no problem changing the way the town would like it. I'm not, um, I didn't create the logo, um, but I'm, we surely can modify it to meet the town's needs. It's, it's not a, um-
Yeah, it's, let me ask you, Andy, what, on the sign, what did you take into consideration as being part of a logo? The word car wash, was it?
Well, it was, it was kind of difficult. Um, I mean, I think I would consider the car with the little, you know, splashing water coming out of it to be more of like a graphic.
Yeah.
Splash, I guess, could be considered. And I guess you could even look at the, the whole sign itself as being a, more of a logo type of a sign. It doesn't say just car wash, it's, it's their logo.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I'm with you on the splash and the little car. Um, I don't know, other folks chime in on this.
I guess the way I look at it, I mean, if this was a big rectangle sign and the logo was in the center of it, it'd be okay for the proportions for the fifty percent, let's say, but the sign might be much, much larger as well, right?
Yeah, and it wouldn't look as nice.
Might not.
I mean, I, yeah, yeah. It is a car with water spray glint off it, so, um, okay. That, I, that particular variance doesn't bother me too much. I don't know what anybody else is thinking about that.
And we're, I, I say this sincerely, we're open minded, I'm not looking to, if you want us to modify that, we'll modify it.
Okay, well, stay open minded because I think that might have been an easy one.
Well, no, I have to say, well-
So-
Yeah, save your chips.
Yeah, so, then the, um, you ha, you're, you are entitled to have one building mounted sign. You're asking for three. Two of them are the ones we just discussed.
I, I think the realization of it, again, some of this, our sign company creates this stuff-
Yeah.
And it doesn't, and I work with him and I've been working with Jamie for, you know, a dozen years and I think the world of him, but the realization is, is that what we would really like is the one on the front, this, the, the one that says up in the top. Um, and the, it, the word, the one word that's synonymous to truly, you know, every study done is the word that brings people in the car wash, is simply the word car wash. They really don't care whose it is, if they like the car wash, they know the car wash, they type up the car wash over on 250, right? They don't, most people won't remember the name of it, but they'll remember the word car wash. So, the channel letters below it, it, it fills a gap, it looks clean, it's on the, if you see on the Geneva building, um, the photos that I gave you, that-
Which one was Geneva?
Was that the last one?
It was the first one.
The first one, yep, correct. Um, you can see there were, it has the word car wash- Yeah.
Free vacuums and it has those little logo signs. That, that met Geneva's qualifications, there was no variances on that, but that, you know, that word car wash is probably, in our opinion anymore, is probably the most important part about it.
Okay.
The reason we put the free vacuums, like, we, we like putting the word free vacuums down there is to let customers know it's not confusing. Truly, when we open sites, ninety percent of customers come, they, they get out and they're looking for the coin slot, they're looking for the dollar bill, the credit card receipt, they don't have an understanding that it's all free. Everything over there is free.
Yeah, I was going to ask you if you needed to use that word as opposed to just saying vacuums, but having heard you, I won't ask you because I, you answered it.
And we, we can surely just do, you know, do it another way, a little something.
No, I, I, again, actually, Andy did not include that sign in his calculations and determinations, the free vacuum sign.
Thanks, Andy.
Well, we can overrule.
Harold wanted, Harold wanted to-
Harold would have, yeah. Geez, I'm never, I'm never going to live that down, but that's okay. So, let me ask you, um, you have a request for three. If we were to approve two of your choice, is that something that would be, uh, accepting to you?
Yeah, I think the only, we, I mean, it'd be great if we could get the one on the front up in the glass.
That, what I would propose is you, you choose, we'll give you two, you choose. That's, that would be my motion.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say that if we get the one at the top and the car wash word underneath it, I'd be thrilled.
Okay. Um, so, then if we, if this board doesn't consider that free vacuum to be part of the building mounted signs, it looks like the size, well, if you only go down to two, that'll probably eliminate that request as well. For sure it will. Um, so then let's talk about the freestanding sign. Were you aware of the, uh, resolution of approval from nineteen ninety-five?
I was, I-
Okay, so, that person got a freestanding sign, a little bit larger, I think nine square feet larger than allowed, but also the height was limited and then the person agreed to not ask for more than one building sign. So, um, you're asking for an even larger freestanding sign, which is, you're right, but you're going to get an extra building mounted sign. So, why, as that backdrop, why do you need a freestanding sign that's really double?
The, the freestanding sign is what probably brings most of the customers to the site as to what's visible from the road.
Okay.
Um, and I, I just want to explain to you that there was not, there was not the intent, if we go to the first page, this is the, the sign there, it says Melco's, this is what it was when we bought it, it now says classy chassis and overlay a temporary sign. But that sign right there is, uh, is forty, forty-four inches tall by a hundred and fourteen inches long, or three point seven five feet by nine point five feet. It's, it's thirty-six square feet. Our goal was truly to downsize that to make it a more, a better looking sign, taking our little round logo. And the round logo sign, though, because it has a little bump up that says car wash on it, um, if you took a square box and made it a square box around it, like in others, if it had one little string that went over, that box keeps getting bigger, it would lay out at forty-two square feet, which would basically be, yeah, a, a few feet over what's there now. But the realization is, if you measure the true circumference of the box, it comes out to, uh, twenty-eight square feet, which is eight feet less than what's there now. It's a, just a cleaner looking sign, um, you know, for us to simply reuse what's there, i- it's just an old looking sign and it's not, you know, we don't, we're fine with height. If you want us to put in a monument with nice brick and landscape around it, like we, we've done at many of our, most every location, you know, whatever we can do to make that sign look great, that it looks great to the towns eyes, it doesn't have to be, you know, the pole sign shown here. Um, I think every town that we deal with, everybody has a different choice of what they would like to see. Our, our concept is let's, we want to make it the best looking possible. We're not trying to cut corners, we're not trying to throw up a metal cheap pole sign here. So, if we can do it with a, a monument sign, you know, some stone pillars, which is our typical way we do them.
Yeah, because I'm thinking about that, just that character of that road there, too, and having something really tall just would feel out of place. And then you have the taller building, too, on top of it that's going to have the sign.
I don't like tall, I don't even know what he put in for height here, so.
Fourteen feet.
Yeah, that, that's not super high, we, we, but we typically, in our monument signs, we typically have the base of them are, is six feet off the ground, is, and again, every town has codes that we need to follow, so, but it's, it's most common for us to have six feet off the ground when we do them in a monument type style.
So, not fourteen feet?
Fourteen's the total. Fourteen's to the top.
The pole's half a six.
So, they have the pole right now, the, the pole's eight feet off.
Yeah.
You need it some degree off, um, you know, for safety, for traffic to, you want the traffic to see through, not to try to be blocked out by the sign?
Okay, well, fourteen feet is within code, right? We just, in ninety-five, limited it to ten for whatever reason, but-
Was it, is it ten feet now?
The current sign, well, it was supposed to be from that ninety-five resolution.
It was supposed to be, yeah.
Yeah, and it was also supposed to be twenty-nine feet, too, but, square feet. Um, all right, not to belabor the logo thing, but would that apply to this sign as well?
What's that?
The logo, fifty percent?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll just have to add that to the list. Okay, um, and then the last i- issue that you have here is, uh, much larger traffic control signs. So, so tell us why those need to be as, as large as you're proposing. I mean, it looks like it's almost three times, more than three times, greater than what's allowed.
I think allowed is four square feet per face and we're at six point four two is what we're looking at.
Yeah, okay, then my math was wrong.
Actually, two square feet is the maximum allowed.
Geez, I'm sorry, I read that wrong. So, two square feet. So, I think the, the simplest way for us would just be, let's reduce those things and let's come up with something that works for the town. I don't, again, this, this is the size sign we use at pretty much every location, the six point four two ones that we have at most every location. And not saying it's right, that's what the, the sign company proposed, but we'll just get rid of it and just is, clean that up as an enter exit, you know?
But is there a, a safety, like, to have an enter and exit, is it better that it would be?
Well, I think that's taken into, theoretically, taken into account by the legislative body that passes the code that says two square feet is the limit. Um, but at least it, it should have been. If, you know, I, we're, we're talking here and I don't, um, if you feel you need a larger sign, go, you know, go ahead and ask for it and make your case. I'm not, it would be great if you said we're going to build it in compliance, but-
Well, to, to us, it's simply this, though, it's, we, nobody wants to see a customer go by their site, slam the brakes on, try to figure out, turn into the wrong place, cause an accident.
Right.
I mean, that's, I'm not saying that this is going to happen a lot, but we, we're all driving down, we're looking for business, we see it and we can't figure out which driveway to get into. Now with the new Burger King next to us, with us, and whether, you know, the next fast food comes next to us where that's, they've cleared the, the, uh, site for something's coming there, whether it is a, a Chick-fil-A or whatever it may be, there is going to be confusion on which driveway is the which. So, in my personal opinion, I think everybody should have designated what's going on. Some towns only allow us to have the words enter or exit and there's nothing more, but you don't know who's your exit and, and enter and-
Yeah, that is, that's a, it's a busy area.
By the road, we'll have one sign, it'll simply be enter. The exit will come off onto the private drive, so it's not, but we don't, we do not, cannot have cars coming backwards through the lane. So, that is an important sign that it at least has to say the word exit, no matter what we do there. But again, I'm, you know, I defer to the board, what you feel as far as safety, to inform customers which driveway to pull into and give them time enough. We don't want to make them so small that they're traveling down that road and they've gone by it, so.
Well, 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 let's put it back on you. What, what is the, the, I guess, the minimum that you're looking for? What, what's the smallest sign that, for the enter and the exit, that you'd be living to, will it deliver?
So, this right here is the standard that we've used at every, you know, that we use at our locations. They used to say classy chassis and we used to use for clean car, dirty car, but, um, you know, I'm just saying, can we could revamp that if you need be and get rid of, you know, I think the words in red, enter, exit are by far the most important two words that we need to get on there.
Yeah, that's, if, I, I, that, obviously, that's drawn to scale. If you were to do that, you'd be enough in compliance in my mind.
Right. And maybe we could just somehow put, you know, have our graphics people work on a little bit and, and create something that, just a little logo on the top that, that could create that little, that little car with this, you know, maybe just something little there to give it a little blip. Um, you know, I, I, I would be fine with doing that as well, you know?
Well, I, I, I don't think you're going to have an issue if you keep it in to two square feet with what's on it. Uh, I'm willing to give you a little bit more because of the busy nature of that area. Um, I, I had written down four square feet for each, which is double what you're allowed. But given the fact it's entrance and exit and Laura's already made some appropriate comments about the, uh, the need for safety there, I'd be, I'd be okay with that. But honestly, if you go back to your sign person, your sign person says, oh, it's not, that's not enough, you know, I guess, let us know. You, you guys are looking, well, you're not, um, I don't want to table it for-
An enter and out.
Right.
Square foot.
Right, but-
We'll revamp it to fit into sizes that's your good word. If you say four square feet-
All right, and if for one reason it doesn't work-
Let us, let us rework it.
Then let us know if you're still pending with, uh, planning board, we could squeeze you in somewhere.
Right.
All right, so I'm going to run through what I think on each of these, um, and then I'm going to make a motion to approve based upon what I'm saying. Um, all right, so it's, the first one is the, um-
Do you want to do seeker first?
Yes, yes, thank you very much. So, on the environmental, I'll make a motion, uh, to declare this an unlisted action and declare a negative declaration.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion on seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
By the way, I don't see any call-ins or anything on this. I, so in any event, the first request is to have these round signs, um, at whatever percentage over code they are. They clearly are over code. Um, we could go through an analysis of whether the words car wash are part of the logo. Um, if you want to do that, that's fine, but I'm okay with the way that they look, um, even if they are a hundred percent. My, my, the second part of my motion is going to be to only grant two building mounted signs and my, from what I've heard, I think they're going to remove one of the round signs, so that reduces the effect of this variance, although it does apply to the freestanding sign as well. But in any event, uh, whether it's one or two round signs, my motion is going to be to approve the variance request regarding the graphics, trademarks and logo. The second, building mounted signs, by the way, let me, do you know how long the property's been in its current state?
I-
Does anybody know?
I'm thinking thirty, over thirty years.
Well, I mean, in terms of being used or not used.
Is it car wash?
Yeah.
It's been consistent. It, I mean, it's been maybe shut down for short periods, but it was, um, I-
Is it Evergreen?
Evergreen was one. It was, it was a Buckmans.
Buckmans before that?
It was Melco's.
Now Melco's.
It was, um, oh, geez, it-
All right, well, so my point is it's been a lot.
Yeah.
And therefore, um, I'm willing to give a little bit more room here in, in some of these requests to, you know, give, give you guys a fighting chance. It's obvious you're going to spend a lot of money here, put a big investment into it and you want it to be a success. I think this board, for the most part, is business friendly and we'd like to, um, try to help as long as we're not creating any detriment, um, to the town and other property owners and users. And I don't think any of my motion will result in that. In any event, so, given the fact that the free vacuum sign is not part of this, and I concur with that, um, my motion would be to approve one extra building mounted sign. Uh, if you guys would go on the record as saying you want the words car wash to be one and then one of your splash round signs, then we could put that in, in the, you can make that part of my motion. Um, I think because my motion would reduce the number of building mounted signs, as I've said before, the next bullet, the square footage total, I think that becomes moot, um, that, that they would be in compliance there, which is good. Um, the forty square foot double face freestanding sign, um, given the fact that it's what up, up there now is thirty-six square feet, um, I wouldn't have a problem with forty square feet as long as you keep the height that's there. And as long as we get, um, if we can get some statement from the town engineer that keeping it at ten foot with a forty square fe, feet is not going to result in any safety issues. And if, and if it does, and the engineer recommends that the sign go down to thirty-six square feet, then my motion would be you either comply with the engineer's recommendation or that's, request is denied.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
I agree.
Um, and then the traffic control, I think we just talked about it. My motion would be to approve you at four square feet, which is double what's allowed. And that's given the nature of that traffic flow on that road. Um, there are many places to turn in and turn out, so I, I do think a little larger[1767.12] There are many places to turn in and turn out, so I, I do think a little larger sign is, is appropriate.
I'll second that, it's well done.
Okay.
Were you going to deal with that separately from the area variance, too? Because remember, there's an area variance request, too.
I, thank you. Boy, I tell you, I don't know what I would do without you folks.
So he gets paid the big buck.
And then as far as, as far as the, what is it, a 20-foot area variance to allow the addition closer than permitted, I would make a motion to approve that as well. There's really nowhere else that addition could go. Okay, so we have that articulated motion, or motions, I guess, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck. And if you, again, if you need to come back because of your sign guy, let us know, but I think you're going to be good.
I'm looking forward to using your car wash, I drive by it all the time.
Well, I appreciate that and I really, I really thank you. You guys, you were all just awesome. I've been doing this for 27 years and I spent 29 years with the state police and I've, I know that you guys give up your nights and this is a, a lot of volunteering and a lot of work and you guys do as better, as well as anybody I've ever seen.
When do you anticipate opening?
Well, we're open now, obviously.
Well, I mean, like with the whole addition and all, all that stuff going.
As soon as we get through with the planning board, we'll get things in motion and get it, start getting contractors lined up.
How long will you take for renovations?
I would imagine this is probably three months. A new build's about six months for us, six to seven months.
Wow, that's not bad.
Yeah, Geneva, we, we actually have our own construction crew, guys that are part of our, have our ownership group that, known with my business partner, myself, for a long time and we actually built that Geneva site, ground up pretty much ourselves with six, seven guys. The height on that freestanding sign, was that, how many feet was that now?
It's proposed at 14, the, the existing sign is, was approved for 10 feet.
Okay.
Same sort of thing with the, with the engineer, then. If the engineer, in, in fact, if the engineer says 40 feet is okay, but it needs to go up a little bit.
And we'll reach out to the engineer.
As long as that's within, the height's within code. It's, the point that you made about looking underneath it is obviously going to be important. Right?
Is it Guinness time now?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I think that we are done with the application, so we will stand adjourned until next month. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much.